Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're gonna get started. We're here for three bills today. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined to my left, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Vice Chair of the Committee; Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee; to my right, Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, 6th District Member of the Committee; and Odette Ramos, 14th District. We have members of Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's office. We're gonna get started with Council Bill 22-0273, Sale of Property 3750 Greenspring Avenue. We'll start with City Solicitor, Approved Reform and Legal Sufficiency.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Department of Finance does not oppose.
Correct.
Department of Housing and Community Development favorable?
Thank you Chairman, Jason Wright here, representing DHCD, and we respectfully stand behind our favorable report.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate, no objection? No one from Real Estate? Department of Planning favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Board of Estimates, this is required to be approved by BOE after council action. Colleagues, are there any questions for our city agencies? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to testify in this matter? Seeing that there's no public testimony, colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably?
Second.
Motion by Stokes.
And second.
Second by Middleton.
And a comment, just a quick comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Vice President.
So, yes, this is the property that has been sold to Kennedy Krieger that wants to, I guess, put another, put a school there and just really kind of enhance the building. My, and I just kinda wanna make, I guess, the administration to really pay attention to, as schools, as we, I guess, as the Baltimore City school system turn over schools to us, that we really need to pay attention to securing these buildings. Because I really start to see a trend in break-ins and stealing the copper. And it, it's, it's, to me, it's just so obvious that there's really something going on, and if we don't put a stop to it and really kind of investigate, because the, the way the schools are being secured, it's not secured enough. And the potential owners of these buildings will, you know, they end up having to put out more money for renovations and so on, and it just continues to delay progress for the city. So I just wanted to really put that point out there. I'm really gonna be paying more and more attention, because it's just not fair to the people that we entrust to want to really help the communities with these buildings. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to really make that statement.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There was a motion by Stokes, a second by Middleton. Any other deliberation? Costello is a yes, Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey's absent, McCray's absent, Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer's absent, Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes with four yays and three absences. This bill moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. Next bill, City Council Bill 24-0493, Sale of Property 1807 Harlem Avenue. City Solicitor, Approved Reform and Legal Sufficiency?
Yes, the Law Department approves the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Pardon?
I said, yes, the Law Department does approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Mr. Pietro. Department of Finance favorable?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development favorable?
Yes, we respectfully stand behind our favorable report.
Thank you. No one from Department of Real Estate, but they were favorable. Department of Planning?
Still stand by our favorable report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights, Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, they stand by their bill report.
Favorable?
Yes.
And this requires Board of Estimates' action after council action. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing as there's none, is there anyone from the public who wishes to testify in this matter today? Seeing as there's none, is there a motion to move the bill favorably? Motion by Stokes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton. Costello is a yes, Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey absent, McCray absent, Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer absent, Stokes?
Yes.
This bill passes with four yays and three absences, and moves to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. City agencies, that frees everyone up to leave except for DHCD, is that correct? Dexter, is that correct?
Yes.
Do we need law or finance?
We need law.
We need law. Do we need finance?
Finance should stay.
Finance should stay. Pleased to be spending the morning with you. Thank you. Legislative Oversight 24-0061, Briefing Fixed Price Policy and Buy-In to Be More Program. For the purpose of having representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development update the council and the public on the process, people will need to follow to apply to purchase properties through the newly enacted fixed price policy and generally the Buy-In to Be More program. We have agency reports from, or a presentation from DHCD. Commissioner Kennedy, I'll turn it to you.
Excellent. Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. Happy to be here this morning to talk about the fixed pricing schedule that was approved by the Board of Estimates. We'll be going through, just a little bit of a reminder about the program and kind of where it is. So we are, you know, the goal of this is to support the community-led development and also making Buy-In to Be More, which is the process in which we've been selling properties for a number of years now. We moved to Buy-In to Be More back two years ago from kind of the vacant-to-value process. And it is, you know, meant to make the process more transparent, streamlined, and access to properties, and to align with shared values related to community, community development. We can go two slides forward now. Just a little bit other reminder in terms of background, on the next slide, you know, we acquire, DHCD acquires properties, manages vacant properties, abandoned properties, as well as vacant lots. You know, our goal is to definitely move these back to productive use with the, you know, goal of whole blocks, whole strat, whole block outcomes based on block-level planning, restoring our communities back to whole communities essentially, with a whole-block strategy. So the fixed pricing allows for certain city-owned vacant buildings and lots, in specific housing market typologies, to be sold for that fixed price. And it, you know, one of the other components of this is that it eliminates the need for protracted price negotiations for a number of the properties that are currently available on the Buy-In to Be More website. Next slide is a reminder also of these goals in terms of supporting whole-block and whole-community redevelopment outcomes, converting qualified vacant buildings and lots back to productive use, you know, stabilizing and strengthening owners' investments in communities as well, and improving neighborhood character. Next slide. Reminder too on summary that the program only applies, the fixed pricing only applies to properties listed as-for-sale on the city's Buy-In to Be More site under the fixed pricing program category. This applies to properties located within the housing market typology categories of E through J. It's limited up to 12 properties per application. Applicants can apply for additional properties as they obtain their use on occupancy permits, and they are not to exceed, you know, 12 properties at any given time. It has to be for redevelopment, for residential or mixed-use, and on vacant lots, it can also include green space. Priority is given right now to current Baltimore City residents who would like to live in the property as their primary residence. And, you know, this does not limit all of, you know, this is specific to the properties on the Buy-In to Be More website. This does not preclude us from using pricing as it relates to larger offerings that we do, whether or not it be through bundle sales or RFPs, RFQs, et cetera, and we are still utilizing those other methods of disposition. This is just one tool in the toolbox. Next slide. This goes into the chart, kind of reminding everybody of the pricing structure, the fixed-price pricing structure, vacant building for for-profit developers or 501(c)(3), a 51 or more, $3,000; the vacant building for 501(c)(3) nonprofits with 50 or less, $1,000; and then community land trusts, or a homeowner looking to purchase the property to live in to renovate as their primary residence for a dollar. Next slide then goes to vacant lots, in kind of the same category of, or system, for-profit or nonprofit with 51 or more, vacant lot is $1,000; and then 50 or less, 500, community land trusts, or purchase to build for your primary residence for homeowner or the land trust as a dollar as well. Also wanted to just go into some other kind of, next slide, reminders as well, that, you know, if a property is assessed for less than the fixed price, that the property will sell for that assessed value. If, for a homeowner, if the property is sold within a six-year period, the original purchaser is required to pay a prorated portion of the $3,000 calculated on the year that the property sold. And we are still requiring valuations and appraisals for the commercial sites, the RFP sites, for other stable communities based on the mark, housing market typologies of A through D, and also our other site assemblages. Next, we're two slides forward now. Next slide. Thank you. Also, for any property that's assessed at $100,000 or more, those are actually needed for internal review and valuation. And those properties assessed at $100,000 or more have actually, we've already removed those from the availability on Buy-In to Be More, so we think we've gotten all of them. But this is just a reminder of the fact that we do have that for properties that are $100,000 or more. We also, through the fixed-price schedule that was approved by the board, we shifted the pricing on the side lot. We had a pretty straightforward side, side lot, side yard pricing structure before, but we also reduced that down to the dollar as well. And they have to, you know, make sure that we verify that the owner that's interested owns the house or the property next door, and that that will be used for. Next slide goes over the applicant criteria. This is a reminder in terms of the criteria that's used for the, we need to just change, I didn't catch that one word up here, the acquired background check, that should be, we now go to applicant review criteria for that. But you have to have 90,000 available minimum for rehab for each property that you've applied for. You can't own any other vacant building inventory older than two years. And then we, if it's less than two years, you have to have permits or, you know, active permits on that, working, working towards the active redevelopment of that. You can't have any open or pending legal cases that might result in an inability to complete the project, no open federal or state liens, and any open federal or state judgments that are in that. The next also is the side yard criteria that I mentioned before. You have to own the property, the adjacent property. It has to, and that adjacent property also has to have a valid use on occupancy permit and be an occupied property, it can't be a vacant property. And same criteria applies as well in terms of not having the other vacant building inventory or so forth. In terms of the application on the next slide, you know, we have one application that was created for the purchase of the properties, and it's being used for all, every single type of purchaser. Next slide. We're accepting applications on the rolling basis with the award or rejection decisions within two weeks of the application. And you have to, you know, successfully go through that vetting process. The application also has to meet threshold. You'll see here in a couple slides, we have some data on what we've been receiving so far, and the big piece is making sure that applications do meet even an initial threshold analysis. Next slide. Once awarded, we actually prepare to go to the Board of Estimates. The Board of Estimates is maintaining a standing reoccurring item on the BOE agenda titled Fixed Pricing Policy Dispositions. And then once the Board of Estimates approval is received, we prepare the property within, for settlement within 45 days of that approval. And we are also working with finance and so forth. We've been working on the process to make sure that we get all of the municipal imposed liens and charges abated within those 10 days, so that we can move forward to settlement. So on the next slide, one of the things that we talked about, and had talked about with the Council President, others, is kind of looking at this in some phases. So right now, from April 1st to June 30th is a priority for homeowner applications. So any applications that are submitted where it is, they wish to purchase the property to renovate, to live in as their primary residence, and as a homeowner, those are the prioritized applications, and those will sell for $1. You still have to have the same review criteria, so you have to be able to show the minimum of $90,000 and no other vacant properties, et cetera, that you'll live in for your primary residence. Phase two, what we've talked about, we're calling this Charm City Roots. This is going back to and trying to connect with any vacant property actually that someone might have lost through redlining, or other tax sale, or other forms of kind of having a familial, familial or connection, or neighborhood connection to a property that is not, now is not theirs, and is a vacant building. We've actually received some inquiries about this already. I know that we have, the Councilwoman Ramos has five, we've gotten some great connections, and this is really what it's meant to be looking for. One of the persons, it was his, the house is in his brother's name, it currently has a VBN, it has a high number of liens, it does qualify for in-rem tax sale, in-rem tax sale, and so we are going to be looking at doing that acquisition and then connecting. And while we're doing the acquisition piece, working to help the buyer and that, that person make sure that they are prepared and ready to be able to do this work and renovate a property to live in, and have their financing in place and so forth. So we're, we are excited while, while this is a little bit of a operational challenge, the team is working through those operational challenges, and we're trying to just figure out the best way to make sure that we're able to connect the properties and the residents and get the proper referrals in place. It actually is utilizing not just our Development Division, but our Homeownership and Housing Preservation Division, working in concert, as many of you know. All the divisions really work holistically to kind of move all of this work forward, and this is an example of those divisions working together. And, you know, we also have, the Charm City Roots will continue, it's not just that it's from an April 15th through to a July 1st, but basically on July 1st, that's when all of the other kind of portal will open, but we'll continue to connect residents through the kind of the Charm City Roots component, starting April 15th. So we're working on getting that. Next slide. Going to go through just an example of some of the applications that we've received since March. We didn't really have a way to close all of the applications and say only if, you know, you're only a homeowner, but we basically received over 1,200 applications in that timeframe, coming everywhere from kind of just out of state, Washington DC, Maryland, and a couple from different countries. The number of actually completed applications out of those 1,253 is only 309. So that is like, only 309 applications met basically initial threshold review. And in other ways, they were incomplete or did not have appropriate information to be considered a, a complete application. So there were some instances, I asked the team to share with me some information on some examples of some of the things that we received to make it be not a complete application. One of them, it was like an uploaded photograph of carpet for one of the pieces. The other was an IOU, hand, I think handwritten, saying, "We will pay the money, or get the money, once we get the property," literally is like an IOU, so that did not qualify or meet threshold review.
There was a selfie?
Oh, we had a selfie that was submitted for the financing information, so, just to let you all know, like, really an honest, like, you know, we've, these are things that we sometimes get anyway, but we've had a little bit more heightened number of these. And, you know, I just want to assure the council members, the public, et cetera, that we do take this seriously in terms of that initial threshold review. Like submitting a photograph that isn't what we're actually asking for is not going to move you to the next stage of what is needed. So that's why, you know, it's gone down over those initial threshold reviews to only 309 completed applications. Out of that kind of 309, we have 207 that were, you know, primary, kind of, the primary resident's applications. You know, 62 of those from Baltimore City, and then others from out-of-state, et cetera. We also broke it down right now in terms of, for the completed applications, where some of those completed applications were coming from. We also know that the primary resident application was the highest number that we've received, which is, I want to say that that is a positive thing, and it could be that there might have been something, because we get primary, we get applications every year from residents that are looking to purchase a property through Buy-In to Be More and renovate as their single-family property. We have not received, you know, this many. So this is kind of the initial threshold review. There are another, these are still in review. So this isn't that all of those applications are going to settlement and we're awarding properties. I just wanted to give kind of that initial snapshot of this. And then on the next stage, you can kind of see here as well, we were looking for specific from, you know, different Baltimore City-specific, just to kind of give a understanding of what we were receiving from applicants within Baltimore City. So that primary resident applicant is as well one of, you know, that, that high number. We believe that after that initial threshold, and these are still moving through the process, that right now there's around 12 to 14 of the primary resident applications that will be kind of moving to the next stage, and, you know, that have kind of shown that not just threshold review, but now we're moving through those other components of the review criteria. On the next slide, in terms of some of the outreach efforts and so forth, we have scheduled some informational webinars. One is April 18th from 1:00 to 2:00 PM, another on April 24th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, and we're moving that out as far as possible. We're also engaging community organizations and stakeholders on outreach, specific for home, you know, the, trying to support the priority of residents that wish to purchase a property to live in and renovate as their primary residence. We have over 50,000 e-blasts that we've sent. We've put together the Buy-In to Be More instructional video in terms of how to submit applications and putting together promotional materials. The other piece of this, which is a little bit different and ties in with outreach efforts, is I have identified and will be talking with a couple of different entities that we would pay to provide technical assistance to homeowners, potential homeowners, those that are looking to purchase, to renovate, that might not have, you know, undertaken a renovation project and would like, and need technical assistance to kind of make it through that process. So we're gonna be engaging with a couple of organizations, and we'll be supporting those organizations to help support and provide technical assistance, especially on the actual construction, construction side of things as well. And that kind of rounds out what we have in terms of the kind of formal presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you talk, forgive me if you covered this, it seems like you did cover some of it. Can you talk a little bit more about the application process and what the timing is once an application's submitted?
Sure. Kate, do you want to talk a little bit about that? Because we have the...
Yeah. Okay. Um, is it the, this button, right? Okay. Yeah, so when we receive the initial application, we're looking to have within two weeks a response out to the applicant of whether or not they have been, whether or not they're eligible and are moving forward in their application, they've met threshold and awarded the process, the property. And then it will move towards Board of Estimates' review. After that, it'll go into that standing agenda item. We already have a standard land disposition agreement for all of these, and so it will use one of those standard land disposition agreements, and then the goal is to settle within 45 days after Board of Estimates. So it does very greatly streamline the process and make it a lot quicker.
Got it. And are we, did you guys send this slide deck to us?
Yes.
You did?
We did, but it was early, it was this morning, so it was very, like, right before the hearing, because we had a minor update.
No, that's all right.
Well, it was sent to me, it wasn't sent out to you.
Okay, can you send that out to us? Okay, perfect. Or send that out to the whole council, and please include Dexter on that. Thank you. Is this, the information about this process, is this gonna be posted online on DHCD's website? And if so, when?
It already, it is already.
It already is.
Yeah, it was up immediately after Board of Estimates' approval. We had all of that information up.
Okay. Can you send us, can someone send us a link to that as well, wherever that is on the website? Okay, thank you. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have some questions on here about, Commissioner, you know I've been opening my big mouth talking about LDA, and I see you have something here about Broadway East, RFQ. You give LDA to other organizations in the city, and I've been talking about Broadway East, Greater Greenmount, and some parts of Dolly Park. Also in here, I see where the administration said there's not gonna, the supportive of small women-owned minorities developers, and also said that if we gentrify, we fail. We already gentrifying. We already failed. So where is the policy in here for gentrification in this fixed by policy? I don't see it. I see, sounds good in writing, but it's not in the policy. And I think myself and Council President actually brought that up before. And we still moving forward, but I still don't see this. I'm still concerned about the LDA. I'm still concerned about those residents who lived in those communities, live next door to those vacant properties, and now I'm looking at, you got out-of-state people buying them. What happened to the people that already lived there? What happened to small black developers in the city should have had first dibs on these 200 properties? Now you got everybody come from out of town, which was been hap, Kate, it says 68 people out of state.
I just wanted to clarify that we received those applications, but we are only processing applications for Baltimore residents who want to...
applications for Baltimore residents who want to purchase a property for their primary residence for the first 90 days.
Well, I'm glad you say that, because I don't see that in here.
Because we, it does say that in here.
Yeah, I don't see it.
I think the, where we have the phases. So we have phase one. We're in phase one right now, which if you read under phase one, that's for applications submitted by Baltimore City residents for properties that will be used as a primary residence. Those are being prioritized during, from April 1st through June 30th. So for this period, we receive those applications because we're not able to sort out who applies, but then once we receive them, those will not be reviewed, and those properties will still be available for Baltimore City residents to purchase during this period.
So what happened to residents who never done development before? They purchased the property. They don't know about permits, they don't know about how to develop, they don't know about, so what happens is they're going to qualify by the property, have their $90,000. If they don't have no technical assistance, and I hope that's there, then they're going to end up losing the property. So is there any support for those persons who actually starting to just get into this?
Yes, that's the technical assistance that I just mentioned, that we're in the process of looking to finalize the agreements with the organizations that we'll be able to provide. We wanted to provide the funding to the organizations to provide that technical assistance.
Yeah, I was just going to speak to the comment at the top of your question, which was around the gentrification. So as part of this fixed pricing and the series of letters that we got from Councilman Ramos, the mayor sent out a letter to the entire council. And included in that letter was a series of directions that the mayor gave to DHCD through Commissioner Kennedy, right? And one of those was to develop an anti-displacement and equity-based framework based on significant community input, right, that will guide how DHCD does development in neighborhoods. So in terms of the gentrification, right, we're going to be looking into that specifically and making sure that anti-displacement is built into how we implement this and how it's ruled out. Commissioner Kennedy can expand upon that. But that was something that the mayor did direct DHCD to take into consideration and to act on.
And just as another kind of follow-up on that, on the RF, like the RFQs and so forth, we actually are finalizing, we had a meeting yesterday, and in the next several weeks, the Broadway East and East Baltimore Midway are the two that we had talked to about moving with first. Coldstream Homestead Montebello is on that list for the RFQs. That will be done in conjunction and in partnership with the communities to find qualified developers. What we hear from a number of the communities is that they want to have developers that are either already working in the community, from the community, that are small women-owned minority developers doing that work, and we want to support that and support the community's desire for that. And so the RFQ is being, some tweaks are being made. It'll be going out to the communities for their review, and then we will be putting out that request for qualifications specific for developers on that. And I want to remind as well that a lot of the work that we're doing, especially in the impact investment areas, the community asset building neighborhoods as well, where we're doing active acquisition, that those properties are not going on to the Buy It To Be More website. This is just specific to what is already on the Buy It To Be More website, and that we're putting together in partnership with the communities, kind of what those bundles or RFP sites look like. You know, in some instances, we just did one in partnership with Park Heights, where it was a small number of properties that was put out as a bundle. We received those applications and then reviewed those with the, with Park Heights Renaissance as the lead community development partner. We've talked about that with the community leaders in Broadway East and East Baltimore Midway as well.
So can, just for the public knowledge, can you explain the difference between an LDA and an RFQ, if they're listening?
Yeah, so the RFQ is a request for qualifications. It is put out to actually get people, in this instance, developers. RFQs can be used for a number of different services or types of professional services. In this instance, it's for developers. So we put out a request for qualifications to have persons respond with their qualifications to do this work, based off of the standards that we agree on with the community as what they want to see as some of the thresholds. Some of the communities have mentioned that they want to be a space where they can support some of the newer developers doing this work, as well as some of the ones that are more seasoned. An LDA is the land disposition agreement. The LDA is the, is basically the legal contract that is entered into to essentially sell the property to the person that's purchasing the property.
My other question is, I don't see nothing. You got good developers in the city, you got bad ones. Are we monitoring those bad developers so they don't be a part of this fixed pay policy? Because I don't see that.
Yes.
Unless I miss it, I don't see nothing built.
That comes in under the review criteria, so that is one of the components where you can't have properties, other vacant properties that are sitting and nothing's happening on them. We also have increased our monitoring and compliance, both staff as well as capacity within the agency to be monitoring and compliance on those that have actually sold over the last several years. And there's now internal triggers as well with the software system that we invested in that alerts us to when permits are pulled. It has some automatic triggers within it that helps us also be able to manage on compliance. But the kind of bad actor component, especially with those, and this goes into when people were asking questions about speculators as well, you, you know, the statement, and in the LDA, it states that you have to apply for your permits essentially immediately. You have to start work and you have to complete the project in 12, you know, in 12 months. We do have some leeway. If someone, you know, if there's a supply chain issue or something, we can give like a two-month extension or, you know, work through that. But it definitely is meant and is situated so that we don't have people purchasing properties from the city just to sit on them and wait, and to not, you know, do the work that they said that they were going to do, and/or if they already own 20 or 30 properties. And we do that research as well, so it's tied back not just to individual names and LLCs. We connect dots and do a significant amount of research so that we can track LLC names back to individuals and so forth, so that we're trying to limit, you know, one entity, like one person having 35, you know, different LLCs with 35 different vacant properties that are just sitting around.
So my last question is, why can't Broadway East and Midway have an LDA? I've been talking about this for three years, and you come up with a RF, RFQF, whatever that is. You got, you got developers right now, you got LDA, and they did absolutely nothing with the property, and it's still under their LDA. What is the timeline when you do LDAs? Is there a timeline, you got to get this done by a certain time? Because you have developers in this city right now, been sitting on property for the last 10 years, and they didn't nothing with it.
I'm happy to talk to you more about that and happy to have a meeting. In our conversations with Dr. Minor Terrell and others, they have been understanding and excited about doing the RFQ process to bring in, because the LDA is with the entity that is going to have the financing and the funding to do the actual construction work. So in my meetings, even more recently, over at the community center with them, talking about the process, as we were also talking about looking at the park around Rutland, they are supportive of the RFQ process, which opens the door for a number of different developers, a number of different small and women-owned developers, developers from the community that they will then be working with. And then the LDA will be executed with those developers after the review of the RFQ is done in partnership with the community.
One more question, I know I've been holding up, but when you do, when you do your dollar, dollar, the 500 or 3,000, I had mentioned this to Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner Jason, some of the property requires some stabilization right away. So if you demo the building, if you don't hurry up and stabilize, it's going to fall. Y'all ever thought about just not having a demo permit, but a demo stabilization permit? So if somebody demoed the building, now they got to go back through the process of getting a stabilization. Y'all ever thought about just having, one is a demo and demo stabilization? Because that's going to stop a lot of these properties from falling when people do demo. Some of it's already demoed. But then you got to go back to housing and ask for a stabilization permit. And I mentioned this to Deputy Commissioner Hessler. Have y'all thought about putting that in part of your permit system?
I think we have thought about that, and actually, we are working, because with additional funding that we have and that have been, that we're working on programming with the state, we're actually looking to stabilize properties immediately. So there's going to be a significant amount of stabilization of properties happening, and properties that the city does not own. But once we complete due process, we can start that stabilization. So you'll see a number of properties that are going to start to be stabilized in the next year with those funds. So they'll be stabilized even before some of those go for sale, before even we acquire them and go for sale. And then that stabilization asks, acts in a lot of ways as a, you know, developer incentive, because it reduces costs on the renovation side.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Middleton and Ramos?
I, I just have one, I guess, question. It was gearing towards, and you answered pretty much the monitoring and compliance. I know I have an increased issue in, I guess, group-type homes. And through that vetting process, how do you make sure that we don't have like a block of, because we, that is happening, we have a whole block of someone renovating and making group homes, Forest Park area. Some of the areas I have that, where there's the big single-family homes, I know the city owns some of those properties as well. Is there something that can reassure that the primary resident doesn't lease out to group homes or, you know, they're changing the aesthetics of, of that neighborhood? And, you know, there should be a limit per mileage and so on. How, how are you going to handle that through all of this process?
So we aren't going to handle that through this process. There are some other, actually, the Law Department has been looking into this. I know that Councilman Ramos has been looking into that. There are legal items, and I think Alina just left, but she's been part of the conversations as well. There are concerns from a legal standpoint, as well as federal housing and ADA compliance and fair housing, that restricts us from being able to put some of those limits in terms of saying density of X number of these types of properties. Right now, they are protected under the ADA. And so we are, have been taking other steps that we can take in terms of how we're doing some of the permitting and monitoring and use of permits, sprinkling, you know, really making sure that we're hitting on all of the kind of safety components to that. But unfortunately, we cannot restrict, if I purchase, even if I, if I purchase the property and I live in the property as my primary residence for six, for six years under this program, I, as DHCD in the city, we cannot restrict them from, you know, leasing the property at that point, or saying that you cannot lease it as a group home, or start your own business there, you know, for, for whatever that purpose would be. So we're trying to look at that from a whole other different angle. We know that that is a concern for a number of different, of the districts, especially districts that have some of the larger properties that are conducive. I just got a phone call about one where, you know, they ended up putting, there's like eight buildings, eight bedrooms in one, it's a large property. I mean, it is a big property, so it can support eight bedrooms, but it's like, what, and the pricing on it, it's like, how are they really going to end up using that property and what's going to be the final use of it? So that is a whole other kind of avenue that we have to be looking at. And we are, and Solicitor Thompson and Deputy Solicitor have been a part of those conversations with our team on the, with Deputy Hessler on our side.
That's good you're still having those conversations, because it is really starting to become a, a problem, especially in neighborhoods of residents that have been around and owned their property and moved to that neighborhood because of the, you know, aesthetics of that neighborhood and have been there 30, 40, 50 years. So thank you, thank you for that.
Can I make one just follow-up comment, even though it's a little off? It also is difficult, because there isn't a lot of those, they're not, they don't require like a license from the Health Department or a license from the Maryland Department of Health in any way. So that is also part of it, is, there are some, but a lot of the ones that we've seen that have come forth, there isn't a licensing requirement either.
Is that, is that licensing through the state? So we need to have some conversations, more conversations with the state?
Yeah, that's part of it. Yep.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the, my colleague's point, we did pass legislation to help the department do enforcement on these particular properties relative to the building code, and to kind of upgrade some things that they weren't doing, so that at least the people who are living there are in better conditions. So, and there's a lot more conversations that we, that we're having as well. So thank you for bringing that up, Madam Vice President. I have a couple of additional questions on this piece. Commissioner, how many properties are available for the 90-day stretch for the primary residence stretch?
It's the entire number that we had, it's three.
Yeah, it started.
360.
It was 360. We've gotten all these applications, we have to release them, and it'll drop back up. Right now, it's been reduced because of, because as soon as somebody puts in, I'm sorry, I'm not on the mic.
Yeah, go ahead.
As soon as somebody puts in an application, it's pulled from the website. But then once we've reviewed it, and a lot of them will be rejected because they're not Baltimore City residents, then it'll be put back up on the website. So right now, it's a lower number, because we got so many applications. But once we've put in the rejection for those, then the number will go back. But it was 360 initially, and it'll go back to close to that number, once we've gotten through all of the ones that have come in.
And so that's like a two-week review process, is what you said?
And as, as soon as they're going through, that's a, that's a priority for the team to get those back.
Does that include the 320 or whatever it was that you already had reserved for the fixed price? You know, you had had some.
So you mean the ones that people had applied for before it started?
Prior.
That does not include those. So those were already not put up, because somebody had applied for them previously.
So it's 360 properties, let's say, are 320 properties that are?
And let me specify, it's 360 buildings.
Right, properties, yeah.
Well, buildings. And then there's like, on the website, when you go to look at fixed pricing, there were more like 1,200 lots and 360.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. Thank you. So yes, so there's the 300 actual physical buildings, but then there's 1,200 lots.
Right.
That are available at the moment, right now. Because as, you know, INREM wraps up, we're going to end up having more properties, but at this moment, for the 90 days, those are the numbers that we're looking for.
Yeah, and I just want to also clarify, as INREM wraps up, those will not, the majority of those, like 99.9999, 99999?
Right.
99% are tied to block level planning outcomes.
No, that's where you've been targeting.
Yeah, and that's what we've been targeting. So I just want to say that, like, as INREM wraps up and we're acquiring more property, that doesn't mean that more will be available on Buy It To Be More.
I guess it depends on the property, but also your strategy has been to target INREM for block-level work, is my understanding. So the properties that are on Buy It To Be More now are kind of the ones that have been out there for a while, basically. I guess my concern, a couple of things, is that, you know, we've been clear, and I think you've said it also. and I think you've said it also, Commissioner, that, you know, there are some properties that are in the middle of other blocks that are vacant. And so have you taken those off of the, so that's, those are not going to be included in there?
Correct. And even if one, we have had instances, and this is one of the reasons why there's language, it says that we can remove a property, is that there have been a couple that have slipped through with an NDA. We found one, Kate found one.
It was in the middle of like a forested area and that needs to be taken off. So there are some. We've done a pretty good job in making sure that we're removing anything that shouldn't be listed. But there are some that have popped up that we need to take them down, so. And it's a moving target as far as the numbers. So when I tell you there's 360, that's what it was when it started. Right now, if you went to look, at least when I looked yesterday, it was down to 55. But that's because all of these need to go back on. So by the end of the week, it should be up to a number closer to the 300s.
Right, because these, just to clarify for the public, these aren't bids. These are applications. And if you're accepted, then you get it. It's just, it depends on how fast somebody can push the button, basically.
Yeah, if you're accepted, you meet threshold and everything.
And the other piece too is that historically, historically, we have not sold city-owned property that has been like in the middle of a block of vacancies. You know, because it's like, no, we're actually not selling that property because there is no acquisition, at that time, there was no acquisition strategy for the ones around it. Or no one, the only time that we have is potentially if another, if the entity that was like, I'm really interested in this one because I own actually the other two and it makes sense for me. You know, and that would start kicking off other components. But historically, that is also something just has been in the past where we're not selling ones.
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of other questions. Okay. So the other piece that, it's, one of the things that we were concerned about also, and this kind of goes with Councilman Stokes' question, is, and we've seen, you know, with 1,200 people, you know, or entities trying to apply for all of these homes, once we open it up to the rest of the world, and, so the criteria is important. So the criteria is, as you say, to try to make sure that, you know, it's an actual entity, that there's a track record. I have two concerns. One is that there's, there's the criteria around adding, making sure that you don't have other VBNs, which I understand. But we never, and I haven't seen any update to add, that there should be some sort of track record, this is for when we open it up, track record of actually doing good work. That you're an actually good property manager, that you don't have other, you know, problems with the rental licensing, that, so it's, you know, and that you're actually successful, that you've been able to bring properties online and people are happy and all of that. So it's not necessarily on the punitive side. It's like trying to find other pieces that are good. I mean, are you going to add that at all to the criteria? Because it sounds like there's so many businesses and entities that are going to say that they've only had a VBN property for two years or whatever. But they, you know, may have a horrible product and they may, you know, be, you know, housing people in a bad situation. And we don't want that either.
Yeah, I think we, I'd like to further that conversation with you, actually. And in terms of some of the track record, we've also been trying to be supportive of those that, you know, we've talked a lot about providing opportunity and building up a lot of, you know.
Agreed, that was my second thing that I'm going to go to.
From the community. Like, we just had, you know, a follow-up meeting a couple of months ago. I went and spoke to a cohort of 30 women, minority women developers in a cohort. And, you know, they are looking, and they're, they are all, I think almost all of them are Baltimore City residents or also own a business in Baltimore. And so we do want to be supportive and so, you know, support developers that are small, minority developers, kind of getting the foot in and going from there. So in terms of that balance of quote-unquote "track record", but I think there are other pieces to it. Like other rental properties, do they have their rental license? Is it active, valid? Are they active with registrations? And those items, yes, absolutely, to be looking at. But, you know, we do want to be supportive of those developers that are kind of, especially the ones in Baltimore, in the city, that are, you know, pushing this work and are from communities doing it.
So that leads me to the second part of this where there's obviously that piece. But then, if we want to be intentional and strategic about, and I use those two words a lot, about who is purchasing the properties, again, when we open it up, what's to say that, you know, an entity from somewhere else is going to apply for a house or a property, let's say, and you've been working with these women to be developers, which I'm so happy that that's happening. And yet, they're not getting these properties because they're not able to push the button fast enough to be able to apply. So are we like reserving properties? Are they going to be part of the block-by-block? Like, how is that working?
Yeah, I'd say that, you know, we are working, we've talked with them about the RFQs that are going out. We've talked and are looking at the RFQs of also being able to provide some of the background information when they apply. That was something in the structuring of the RFQs, to be able to do that. We're connecting them with our community partners so that, you know, we're saying, that's one of the big things. It's, let's get you in front of and have those meetings with the different entities. One of them, I said I wanted to actually bring up to meet with Mr. Washington and Coldstream Homes at Montebello, because I think she had a like family tie to that neighborhood. So it's not, you know, this is just a group of these. And we actually, you know, I think that while there might be somebody sitting there and pressing a button, I, those are the ones that aren't making it through. Like, they're, they're not actually submitting what they need to be submitting, in my opinion, based off of even kind of this first batch of what we've seen. And there will be plenty of opportunity with what we have, like facing us, to be supportive of the developers and being intentional about, you know, connecting and providing those opportunities.
Yeah, I just think we can, you know, obviously, there are people that are just opportunistic and just applying, you know, that's fine. And that's unfortunately, a lot of time that you all have to take. But I do think that, given the conversations with various communities and making those partnerships, it's actually going to be really important to make sure that they have access to properties. And not just through an RFQ, but, you know, that kind of partnership where the community is very confident that they are, you know, okay with this group. And, you know, it may not be that, like, one of the blocks in my district, which I'm sure you know of and I talk about all the time, is, you know, we have a trusted partner there and it's not an RFQ process. It's, you know, we know that they're there. As soon as the properties come up, then they'll get them, you know, every so often. So I just think that we, if we're really intentional about the equity piece and making sure that we're providing opportunities, we're going to have to figure out a way to, whether it's through the block-by-block strategy or through the strategy, make sure that they have opportunity. But that also goes back to the 90-day homeowner property piece where, you know, you may have gotten some applications from people who may not have the 90,000. We've go back and forth, we've had a lot of conversations about that, that also, you know, want to be able to purchase a property. But I don't, there isn't anything in the documentation or anything that we've had outlined that shows that there will be this additional assistance to our homeowners to be able to achieve their dream. This is clearly not a regular, regular, in quotes. This isn't the traditional dollar house policy. So what, if, let's say, 78, these 78 homeowners, you know, residents do get these homes, will the department be working with them to make sure that that is successful? And how does that work and what money's going to be available?
That's an excellent question. And we, you know, do have some existing funds that we want them to apply, especially as first-time homebuyers. They can qualify for first-time homebuyer down payment and closing cost assistance on the, you know, additional renovation loan that they would have as part of that. And we are, I can't finalize it publicly right now. But we are, like I said, also working on the technical assistance piece to make sure that we can connect people throughout this entire process to the technical assistance needed. And then we are calculating in the additional, the additional funding to help close some of those appraisal gaps and so forth. So we don't have that funding in place exactly at this moment. We are looking at how to get some now. And then there'll be additional funding coming after July 1 that can support. So as much as we have kind of what has traditionally been called the developer incentives, we want to have that larger chunk of money available. And we've modeled that out as needing the additional funds on the home, the home-buying side to help cover that appraisal gap as well.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of other questions, but I think my colleagues might have. The Vice President has one.
We'll come back.
I just want to piggyback on the conversation that I guess Councilman Stokes had started and Councilwoman Ramos kind of talked about as well. This is a good, as far as, you know, gentrification and equity, we, you have, we have our Office of Equity right with us. And I just see a representative from that office also being a part of, you know, your panel and discussions as you're going through these RFPs and picking out things because they, you know, they have been doing surveys and have created data. And it's just another way to partner from within. I don't know if you have already started that or if they are included in part of this whole vetting process.
They, we have started and have that, and we have the Equity Off, the dedicated Equity Officer as well within DHCD that has been a part of the process and review and is, you know, continuing to work with the Office of Equity and Civil Rights as well to bring them in on different things, as well as the, you know, panel reviews and so forth. I think that, I know that we reach out to a number of different agencies across the city that participate in the panels. I think we have included them in one of them, or it was with the Affordable Housing Trust one, maybe? That one? But that, that one is a good one to actually have that office. But we also have our Equity Officer that's a part of it as well.
I'm reading the last page on Page 4, and it's saying engagement has not been sufficient with community associations. So what are we, what are you doing in terms of kind of changing that kind of atmosphere? I guess this was a statement somebody made at the last hearing. And it said, again, just having a better conversation with community associations. I don't know who made the statement. Since it's in the, in there, I was wondering whether you're doing different to make sure you engage the community more?
So, I mean, we're engaging the community associations on the, on the front end. We've been doing the reviews of the properties that are available. We've been doing the, you know, block-level planning reviews and, you know, coming up with those acquisition plans and disposition plans with the community as well.
Commissioner, do you have a list of all the properties that you're actually, people already apply for, I guess you could say?
Yes.
Because I don't have the list. I don't know if any of my colleagues, do y'all have a list? Do y'all have a list of the properties they have for the fixed pay policy from the HCD?
We haven't provided the list, but we can provide a list. I don't think we've been, we haven't been asked for that.
This committee and the colleagues, we probably need that list that you're using where people applying for these, I'm seeing on properties.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it's publicly available, but we can provide a list.
I know, but when, I want to be able to, I know it's on the website, but can we print it in something like this? Because a lot of times, when you go to community associations, they, they don't know how to access that.
We can, but it changes day-to-day. That's the only thing, is that what we give you today, like I was saying earlier, there's like, right now, about 50 properties available. But once we release all these applications later in the week, there'll probably be a couple hundred available. So what I give you today is not going to be accurate. So the most accurate is what is on the website from day-to-day, but we can provide the list. And can you remind me? Which can be exported. Anybody can do that. Yeah, the, any community person that's interested, and any day, they can export a list of what's.
Well, even if it changes, whatever you have, if it change, get that additional information. Because a lot of communities don't go to community association meetings. They just want the information.
And you can also search by zip code. Can we search on there by council district? By neighborhood, by zip code?
Right.
But.
But I'm just saying, just a paper form? I know it's going to change. Yeah, if it changes, then send the changes. But right now, a lot of residents don't go to community meetings. They don't have nothing to do with communities. But when I go to meet, I want to still be able to give them something to say, this right now, this is the first 15, and if it changes, additional information.
Can you, can we work to help meet the needs that you're talking about?
Sure.
On maybe before, like, if we have awareness before the meeting? Because basically, it's potentially going to be changing daily. So if there's a specific community meeting and you have that date, can you, can we work to connect? And then give you the updated list, like, that morning?
Okay.
So that it, that would help just in terms of being able to reduce some of the confusion or staff time around it, because it is going to be changing.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one question just for clarification. Are you speaking of the ones that are available for application or the ones that have been applied for in a neighborhood?
The ones that are available and apply for. If, and I know there's probably, the easier part is probably the ones that apply for, but I'm.
No, the ones that are available is probably the easiest one.
Well, the easy, but the ones that keep changing, that's the ones that's going to be. But I, we'll work that out some kind of way.
Yep, all right.
Thank you.
If I can clarify, I think what the Councilman is asking is, if I may, the, those properties that are available as of 320 to the end of the 90-day period, is that what you're asking? So that it would include some that are in already application phase if maybe you put that as a notation on the, on the spreadsheet?
I think he wants the ones that are available.
Available, okay.
Yeah.
Just available.
Just, yeah, the.
Yeah. Yeah, just available is fine. Yeah, just available is fine. It's helpful because some people are map people, some people are spreadsheet people. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we had a walk-in last week of somebody who wanted a spreadsheet and we worked with her and printed it out for her. So we definitely are open to helping people do that.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple more. Okay. Thank you. I wanted to go back to the, to the LDA. I just want to hear a little bit more about what the process is going to be to monitor. And again, not just for the 90 days, but for moving forward. Because in an analysis from my office, there, in the 90, since the 1990s, there have been 420 properties that have been sold, these are buildings, that have been sold by the city but are still vacant. And so we want to avoid that situation. We want to take those back. But also, so, so that means that they were violating whatever LDA existed at the time. And so we need to be able to use a reverter clause. We need to be able to do that if, if things aren't working out. And I do know, because we have a case in my district, where somebody wasn't doing a good job and we were able to redirect that property to be owned by a different person and it all worked out. But that's not always the case. So what is going to be the new strategy relative to enforcement of the LDA? And again, this isn't necessarily for the 90-day piece because you've just made a commitment that you'll be working with everybody to try to make their hopes and dreams actually occur. But, you know, moving forward, after that 90-day period, when everybody and their mom is going to start, you know, applying for the properties.
You want me to, okay. So we, in the past, and when you're going back to the 90s, that predates a lot of the improvements that we've already made. We used to have to have a single person who would have to really do all that research and find out whether or not permits have been pulled. And usually, that was more reactive than proactive. We've now moved to a system that allows us to track that on a proactive basis. So we, as soon as we have an LDA that's put into the system and there's triggers that will send emails to our staff to let them know this property is out of compliance. So that has been, over the past two years or so, that we have gotten that in place. So we've already sent out letters to everybody that were out of compliance to notify. um, to notify them that they were out of compliance. And then from there, we're working on the kind of stepped-up enforcement going forward, which will include reviewing the property on whether or not it is eligible for reverter, because there's certain eligibility requirements to be able to do that reverter, um, and it can be challenging. And then also, another option is either we can re-acquire the property through our different means of acquisition, or it could go to receivership. So we're evaluating that, but we have in place already where we're getting that proactive notification, and that's allowing us to be more proactive with that enforcement. We also are building a whole compliance team. So, like I was saying, we only had one person doing it before, but now we're going to have a team of people who will be doing both the asset management, which is managing the city-owned properties and the maintenance, and also, um, working on that compliance piece and making sure that we have more people that are able to track that and enforce it. So we are ramping that up as we speak, and, um, going forward, it'll be a lot more stringent.
Thank you. And my last question, um, I was looking at the presentation, um, where it says the goals, and this is the presentation for the, the whole fixed-price program, and obviously, um, I, you've emphasized that we want to do fixed pricing for really everything, not just whether or not it's on Buy and To Be More, but we're just talking about the Buy and To Be More properties right now. Um, where it talks about support whole-block and whole-community redevelopment outcomes. Um, that's not what this does, because it's, uh, it's just single properties. So, um, I don't know whether this page was talking about your overall goals, but it, it doesn't support the whole-block strategy. Or how do you think, how do you see that it does?
I mean, I, it, we believe that it does support the whole-block strategy in some instances. Um, these are some of the properties that might be actually one of the last components of a block or part of a block. Um, but we don't believe that it negates a whole-block outcome. I mean, all of these renovations of properties go to support a whole-block outcome. Um, it just might not be that that whole block is done by one entity in this instance. In a lot of cases, we actually do have multiple entities working on one block, and the end result is a whole-block outcome, where there are, you know, zero vacant properties, where homeowners, existing homeowners have been assisted, where the, you know, the lots, um, you know, we've figured out maintenance or, like, the long-term vision of a lot. Is it a permanent green space? Is it permanent stormwater? Is it being held and maintained for future development? So, um, we do firmly stand by that this supports a whole-block outcome. Um, it is not a whole-block outcome in the standpoint of there's one singular developer doing that whole block, but that is not what we're seeing. But it does support, um, the return of whole blocks to, um, productive use, um, to, you know, um, it also, you know, supports, um, you know, those getting, and in some instances, we, these properties might, like I said, be some of the last, um, vacant properties on a block, or minimal vacant properties on a block as well.
Well, I could certainly see, I would just take my district in Waverly, I've got like four vacant properties there. And, you know, once they go through the process, I could see how, you know, obviously, then the full block will be, will be maintained. I think where I'm coming from on whole-block strategy is the blocks that really need it the most. Um, and that's going to take sort of all the tools, including this one, not just, you know, one or two. Um, so I guess it just kind of depends on how we, um, address that. And I would be remiss, I should probably ask the Council President's question about, um, the, uh, the affordability piece, and how we, I, I know you've had conversations with him, but just to try to make sure that the committee and the council understands, um, you know, the Council President has talked a lot about making sure that, you know, we're preserving affordability, and so how is that going to work in this particular case?
Yeah, I think, um, so the affordability comes in on the funding that we have available. Like, we can't demand somebody create an affordable outcome or a long-term affordable outcome without providing some of the, the funding that's available. Um, and that is a big piece. So in, in the fixed pricing structure that was, and schedule, um, that is one reason why the Community Land Trusts are there, because Community Land Trusts for a dollar, they, uh, create affordable, long-term affordability, whether or not it is a rental or a homeownership outcome. So that is one component here. Um, and then we have the additional funding that we're, um, going to be, you know, receiving and working on, is going to be able to provide additional, um, monies that is available to provide, you know, affordable outcomes and long-term affordable outcomes associated with that. And that is where the, the monetary agreements and the funding agreements is where we can, uh, work to, um, actually achieve the long-term affordability, which is part of the anti-displacement strategy, and really thinking about, um, whether or not it is, um, you know, Community Land Trusts or other, um, ground lease, you know, lease agreements or, um, rental agreements as well, you know, because we want, you know, we want vibrancy. We need a lot of affordable housing across the city, including rental affordable housing, um, at all varying different levels of AMI that is needed. And that is going to be, um, you know, be able to be ramped up. We have and support a lot of that through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund funding source right now. We're going to have additional funding sources that will be coming in. Um, and those incentives, um, you know, whether or not it's for a developer incentive, for long-term affordability, or, um, otherwise, you know, people that apply for a property through Buy and To Be More can also take advantage, you know, when we put out there, um, some of the new, you know, funding sources and programs that we'll have, they can also take advantage of that if they choose. We can't force someone, um, through a sale of the property to choose to do long-term affordability, but we have to have the funding and programs available to support that. And that's a big piece of the guardrails that we're thinking about, because, you know, anti-displacement isn't just on the front end, when we talk about development without displacement, you know, that isn't just about, um, changing kind of the practices of the past of acquiring and, um, relocating residents and doing mass demolition and clearing of properties. But we really are thinking about, um, the anti-displacement strategies, which go towards kind of the gentrification that Councilman Stokes mentioned and others have mentioned, that there has to be programs that meet all different, um, income levels, that are all different income levels for rental and homeownership that are in place, so that as this work is occurring in our communities, two years, three years, four years, five years, ten years down the road, guardrails and programs are in place so that we do not end up, uh, like some of our other jurisdictional counterparts across the country, where they're having to come in and to create affordability, put, you know, a down payment and closing cost assistance program of four hundred thousand dollars. Um, that is something that, we've seen that happen in other jurisdictions, and that is what we need to get into place so that we, um, you know, avoid that long-term.
Um, this is really my last question. The, um, reporting, yep, well, for, for today.
Councilwoman, you've, you've exhausted the committee, so you can ask as many questions as you like.
Um, the, um, the reporting. So we haven't talked about how we're going to be able to, um, get, understand what the outcomes are, um, for this. So we should have a discussion about, um, whether we're coming back every so often, or, you know, after the ninety days, if you could send us the information on what properties were purchased, you know, um, and, and how that worked. And then I think we also would like to hear more information, uh, once you have it solidified on the Charm City Roots piece, which, again, I have been sending you, um, those opportunities. Um, so, so just to, again, for, for this committee, and I believe for ECD, if I may, Madam Chair, um, to, to understand how this is working. Um, and so the information we would need is, um, the, um, you know, the, the addresses, um, and you don't have to say who the buyers are, because I don't think that's fair, but, uh, you know, how, how this all worked, you know, and then eventually, what subsidy is going to end up being needed, et cetera, because I think we need to see that whole picture relative to the, the ninety-day piece. And then after that, I think I'd like to work with you on what those reporting would be to achieve the successes that you want to achieve and that we all want to see and that we've talked about here, um, relative to those, the rest of the properties as well.
Yeah, and, um, the team is evaluating, so, um, we have had a couple of different, uh, platforms where we track, you know, information and data around vacant properties and rehabilitation of those and whole-block outcomes. Uh, we've been, uh, working to update one of those platforms, um, over the last several months with the state, and that will really be kind of the premise of Vacant Stat, of, you know, or what Secretary Day and I are calling Vacant Stat. And, uh, data and information from this will be, um, included, um, in, in that as well. So we will be able to, you know, provide, um, data and, uh, kind of be able to track and formulate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues for, um, indulging me. Oh, the Council Vice President.
Uh, just one, I guess, last burning question. Um, and I know our Council President talks about this a lot, and that's concentrated poverty. And, um, of course, I have Park Heights that's going through a revitalization of many, many years of problems, and we have the Seventeen Acres that has to be re-redeveloped. How, is that going to play in part of this, um, fixed price, not at all?
No, the Seventeen Acres is not, because that's already under, um, and, you know, kind of the award and the agreement with, um, NHP and the, the development team there. So they're doing the, you know, the senior building is underway, and multifamily building, we actually are hoping, um, that they'll be able to move to closing, and then the rest of the Seventeen Acres is, um, single-family or, uh, not, uh, single-family detached or semi-detached, uh, properties. So the fixed pricing schedule does not apply to that, but it does apply to, you know, there's-
Park Circle, Tawanda, Shirley, all those-
A couple of those, um, where there have some properties, and I think, you know, we, um, had a meeting with PHR on Friday that the team was talking about it more, and we've been looking at which prop, kind of like the question that Councilman Stokes said, like, what is currently available, what isn't? And then it plays into the, um, block-level planning work that we're doing with PHR, and the bigger kind of acquisition strategy and disposition strategies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner, thank you for the comprehensive briefing. We are now in recess.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.